I love the way you push your hair back from your forehead. I love to watch it falling back into your eyes. The sun may rise and set, but you're the only light I see. I love everything about you, except the way you don't love me. I love the way you hold my hands when we're dancing and pull me close to sing softly in my ear. When you're near, my breath comes fast and my knees go weak. I love everything about you, except the way you don't love me. You don't let me count the ways like lovers do. You don't watch me when I look away from you. You don't lie to me, it's true, but you won't say we're through. I love everything about you, except the way you don't love me. I love to watch you sleeping in the early morning and pretend it's me you're seeing in your dreams. And I know that I should let you go and set my own heart free. But I love everything about you, except the way you don't love me. I love everything about you, except the way you don't love me. You're playing chicken on a dead end road, rushing roulette on overload. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Well, I'll bet your mama don't know just how you've been treating your soul. Oh, you don't care as long as you don't feel a thing. Got everything going for you right down the drain. You're just so thirsty all the time, can't seem to get enough. Of the smoke and the blow and the bottle and all your secret stuff. Watching you waste away, I think I waited too long to say that I'm here and you need me and now it might be too late. Got everything going for you right down the drain. You're like a subconscious sabotage, making all the wrong moves. But you won't see what it's doing to us or what it's done to you. Or you don't want to believe that things could really be okay. And instead, it just lasts, keep you bound asleep at the end of the day. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Maybe you've lost your mind, it seems you're no longer there. Just a shell one who never do think that what's possessed you. And I just can't stand by when you won't even give hell but try. Well, I love you, but I won't end up this way. You're playing chicken on a dead end road, rushing roulette on overload. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Well, I'll bet your mama don't know just how you've been treating your soul. Oh, you don't care as long as you don't feel a thing. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Got everything going for you. You're playing chicken on a dead end road, rushing roulette on overload. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Well, I'll bet your mama don't know just how you've been treating your soul. Oh, you don't care as long as you don't feel a thing. Got everything going for you right down the drain. You're just so thirsty all the time, can't seem to get enough. Of the smoke and the blow and the bottle and all your secret stuff. Watching you waste away, I think I waited too long to say that I'm here and you need me and now it might be too late. Got everything going for you right down the drain. You're like a subconscious sabotage, making all the wrong moves. But you won't see what it's doing to us or what it's done to you. Or you don't want to believe that things could really be okay. And instead, it just lasts, keep you bound asleep at the end of the day. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Maybe you've lost your mind, it seems you're no longer there. Just a shell one who never do think that what's possessed you. And I just can't stand by when you won't even give hell but try. Well, I love you, but I won't end up this way. You're playing chicken on a dead end road, rushing roulette on overload. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Well, I'll bet your mama don't know just how you've been treating your soul. Oh, you don't care as long as you don't feel a thing. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Got everything going for you right down the drain. Got everything going for you.
Every night when the sun goes down behind the clouds, I close my eyes and remember the things that we could have had, but I know I tried. There's just something in your eyes I couldn't deny, oh Caroline.
Good morning, everyone. I'll call back to order the Austin City Council. It is 10:14. We are out of executive session and back into open session. The item we will take up now will be citizens communication, I'm sorry, public testimony with regard to item number two on our agenda. Madam Clerk, I'd ask you to start letting us know who we have to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. The first remote speaker is Beverly Luna.
Hi.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Beverly Luna. I'm with Austin Lost and Found Pets. We have 70,000 members and our mission is to reunite lost and found pets with their families. People used to be able to go to the Austin Animal Center to look for their lost pets. Under Spencer Cronk, the Austin Animal Center has been so poorly run that finders of lost dogs can't get dogs into the shelter for over a month. By then, most dogs have either been released out to the streets or rehomed. Animal Control has essentially stopped picking up stray dogs despite city and county organizations requiring them to do so. And these dogs are less than suffer and die in the streets if a member of the public doesn't help them. For each month in the three years since Spencer Cronk brought Don Blain in to be director of the shelter, the intake of dogs at the shelter is 50% of what it was in years prior. For example, in June 2016, the shelter took in and was able to handle twice as many dogs as the shelter took in in June 2022. The Austin Animal Center spends its time and tax dollars marketing their story that they have to restrict intake because it's a large influx of dogs that are passing across the country.
Thank you, Ms. Luna.
Thank you, Speaker. Your time has expired. Next speaker is Elizabeth Gerbrick.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Gerbrick. I'm a resident of District 9. As I understand, the decision to appoint a new city manager was unanimous, albeit years overdue. I won't waste time in immorting the dozens of voice funds for Cronk as a shelter city. I would like to instead ask Council for the utmost prudence in determining his severance to offer no more than the bare minimum contractually obliged. His salary is near 10 times that of the median Austinite, including mine. And most Austinites won't be able to afford COBRA coverage if they even get it. Spencer Cronk will be fine. The city of Austin, people of the city of Austin who have suffered under him will not be. And so again, I would like to demand that he be offered no more than the bare minimum he's contractually obliged in severance.
That concludes the remote speakers. But before we go into in-person speakers, Mayor, if I can make a statement that we're going, to all the speakers, we're going to call three speakers at a time. So the first speaker, please approach the podium, and the other two, please make your way to the front. This way, this will allow us to streamline the process. We do have a Spanish speaker and the interpreter is on the line. Jacqueline, can you hear us? Jacqueline?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. One second. The first speaker is Linda Nuno, speaking on items one and two. On deck are Brandon James and Cleo Petrcek. Okay, Jacqueline, you may begin. Linda Nuno.
La verdad es que no importa si hablo en inglés o en español. Siguen sin escuchar, siguen sin hacer su trabajo. Le pido a todo congreso, a todo council member, que por favor no dejen que esta persona que está sentada aquí como Cronk haga lo que siempre ha hecho, que es nada más tomar la parte de la policía, dejando fuera a las víctimas de la policía. Sin importancia hemos sido violadas, nuestras hijas.
Un momento.
Por supuesto.
Un momento, señora Linda, por favor. Yo soy Jacqueline, tu intérprete. Por favor, podría hablar más lento y usted dice una oración y yo digo una oración, por favor, para que podamos decir todo lo que estás diciéndole al consejo, por favor.
Claro que sí, Jacqueline. Muchísimas gracias.
Gracias a ti.
No importa si hablo inglés, español, o Swahili.
Claro que, with English or in Spanish.
La verdad es que siguen ustedes sin entender o querer escuchar o dar justicia a la gente que los puso en el puesto en quien está sentado.
The fact is that we need the justice at the place where he's been put.
Estoy harta y cansada de estar peleando por la hija a la cual...
Linda, ¿podría repetir la última parte?
Estoy cansada y harta de pelear por una hija a la cual tiene mi ADN y no la adopté. A esa yo la di vida.
No te escuché bien, Linda, disculpas.
I'm sick and tired of fighting for a child, my child, a child that I didn't have to adopt, that I actually carry. It has my DNA. It doesn't matter if I am speaking Swahili, French, or Japanese. You're still not hearing the voice of the people, the people who elected you. It's time for you to step down. And I ask every single council member in here to please do not cave and do not forget the promises that you made to all of us. I am the survivor of a rapist who just happened to work for the APD police. My case has been derailed at every single step of the way. My lawsuit for the Fourth of July sexual assault and no lawful arrest while I was fighting against ICE and the crimes against humanity perpetrated against my people was thrown out. I will not go away and I will not stop until you step down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James Brandon. On deck is Cleo Petrcek and Kathy Mitchell. James Brandon. Cleo Petrcek and Kathy Mitchell is on deck.
I am here today in support of a four-year contract. It's time to put APD on stable footing so Austin can attract and retain the best talent in law enforcement. Those so loudly supporting a one-year contract are the same who gave us the misguided and foolish defund policy. They have demonstrated that no sensible proposal is acceptable to them and that they have zero concern for working-class neighborhoods, businesses, or schools. Every single one of you on the dais knows that the brunt of crime and chaos falls on people who can't simply show up here to engage in the performative virtue signaling so common with the activist crowd in this city. No matter how loudly they cry racism, there is no getting around the fact that... Do you need me to stop? Okay. It's people of color disproportionately from the misguided policies these performance artists promote. It's time to stop the madness and support the results of good-fate negotiation between the city and Austin Police Association which delivers both stability and progressive oversight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Mitchell. On deck is Jack West and Alexander Strenger. After Alexander Strenger is Gavino Fepnandez.
Kathy Mitchell has indicated she doesn't need to speak on the side.
Alex Strenger, please proceed.
Good morning, Council. My name is Alexander Strenger. My pronouns are clown, clown self. Last week, I applied to be the CEO of Austin Energy. Unfortunately, I feel as though you guys didn't take me seriously, but that's okay. I'm back. Apparently, there's a new job opening to be the new city manager, so I am throwing my hat in the ring. This job requires a lot more responsibility than being Austin Energy CEO, so I am asking for a base pay of $750,000 a year. Austin is an expensive city, especially when you live on Rainy Street. Go out to dinner five nights a week and use cocaine heavily. Not only that, but I blew my entire life savings on Pfizer and Moderna call options. And now I'm broke because people would rather listen to Nazis like Joe Rogan instead of esteemed scientists like Bill Gates and Dr. Fauci. Not only that, but my wife is immunocompromised. She has stage-five testicular cancer. And when you refuse to get vaccinated, you're basically telling me that you want my wife to die. Back when I was the lead content moderator for Twitter, I called the police on my next-door neighbor for going to the park by himself during COVID. And guess what? The police never came. So why should they get a four-year contract? Also, I was assaulted on June 15th of 2020 after throwing a Molotov cocktail through a small business because the owner called me by the wrong gender pronoun.
Wallace Lundgren, Elizabeth Barron. Mr. Lundgren, please proceed.
Good morning. I'm here to ask you all to consider not firing Mr. Cronk, give him a period of three or four months to get straightened out and see what your mutual priorities are. I don't see any point in giving somebody a raise and 30 days later trying to fire him. I think it's a horrible waste of $400,000. He was good 30 days ago. Now he's no good because we had a storm. So I believe that you should outline what you think he should be doing and in 90 days, reevaluate it and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elizabeth Barron. On deck, Manuel Jimenez, then Juana Burton. Gus Benya. That concludes all the in-person speakers for item two.
Thank you very much. Members, at this time, the chair will accept a motion. The motion will involve... Oh, yeah, I do. Before we do that, I want to ask the city manager for clarity purposes. What did I say? Oh, sorry about that. I want to ask the city attorney to make sure that we're operating under the posting in a way that is appropriate. The posting is such that the council would be in a position to terminate the employment of the city manager by removal of the city manager. It would be to pay the city manager separation pay entitled under the ordinance that hires the city manager, and it would allow for the employment of an interim city manager and set the pay scale for that interim city manager. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. I know there's some talk about that, but you're posted for authorizing the payment of severance benefits and to appoint an interim city manager. And the payment of the severance package is triggered either by council terminating the manager or by the manager being forced to resign. And that is what you were doing today.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. So I will accept a motion to be made by the mayor pro tem. It will have three parts to this motion. The first would be the council removing Spencer Cronk from the position of city manager effective February 16th, 2023, and approval of payment of all severance benefits to him as set forth, set out in Part Two of Ordinance Number 20181213046. Those payments being a base pay for 12 months of $388,190.40, COBRA payments for six months in the amount of $10,234.92, deferred compensation for 22 pay periods of $19,038.46, a vacation payout of 240 hours of $44,791.20, an exception vacation, four hours of $746.52, again, in accordance with the ordinance that was passed with regard to the hiring of the city manager for a total of $463,001.50. The third part of the resolution would be for the appointment of Jesus Garza as interim city manager of the city of Austin effective February 16th, 2023, and to establish compensation and benefits for the interim city manager to become effective as of the effective date of the appointment and continuing until a new city manager is appointed and serving or until council takes other action inconsistent with this resolution. Number one, acting base salary of $350,000 paid in accordance with normal payroll practices, deferred compensation contributions equal to $19,038.46 annually paid in accordance with normal payroll practices, an executive allowance equivalent to $7,200 annually subject to applicable taxes and paid in accordance with normal payroll practices, cellphone and data allowance equivalent to $1,620.32 annually plus an annual $225,000, I'm sorry, $225 device allowance subject to applicable taxes and paid in accordance with normal payroll taxes, and all other benefits allowable under city personnel and benefit policies in accordance with the terms and conditions of those policies. Mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move appro-
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the motion.
Seconded?
I second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion say aye or raise your hand. Councilmember Harper-Madison? The motion passes unanimously. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, it does not.
I'm sorry. I'm not understanding. You're voting yes, so it is unanimous?
No.
She's voting no?
I'm saying I'm not voting yes.
All right, thank you. So are you voting?
I am voting no.
Okay, very good. Then the motion passes on a vote of 10 to 1 with Councilmember Natasha Harper-Madison vote being shown voting no. For those that are here and here to testify, we are now going to take a brief recess. My hope is that it's no more than 10 minutes long and we will be back in, and at that point in time, we will begin the public testimony with regard to item number one. Thank you all. We are now in recess.